For April 2017, we're all ready to go. Mr. Johnson.
Pierre Checo.
Here.
Steve Loujohn.
Here.
Chad Weyer Carter.
Here.
Chris Dovell.
Here.
John Petuliano.
Here.
Daniel Castaneda.
Here.
Carly Newbauer.
He's here.
Suzanne Budwick.
Here.
Dave Fitz Henry.
Here.
Jeff Brum.
Here.
Public announcement.
Please be advised that notice requirements of the Public Meetings Act apply with its satisfaction. Annual notice will be issued in time, place, and conduct of all public meetings of the City of New Brunswick. The City Clerk will place an appropriate notice order at the City Hall, 78 Fire Street, New Jersey, and transmit official papers of the City of New Brunswick to the home of the district.
Please stand with the student card.
The flag of the United States of America, and of the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and law.
Moving on to the minutes of the board on March 13.
Chairman, members of the seat copies of the minutes in their packets, Mr. Terry James or addition. Come on, Mr. Carter. Fall to favor.
Aye.
Close.
First application tonight is for Cultural Center redevelopment association, Urban renewal LLC, New Brunswick Cultural Center.
Just for the members of the public who are here, just so they don't wait too long for application. If anyone's here for the 1002 Jersey Avenue application, that's not going to be heard tonight. Ask to withdraw that application and ask to come back when July 12 meeting. Will we do public notice and personal notice on that application? That will not be heard if you're kind of here for that meeting or that application, it will not be heard. We can now proceed with the other application.
Very good. This is application DP 2017-01 for site plan and subdivision application. Standard for cultural center redevelopment plan, construction, mixed use, development consisting of theater, office space, residential units, and parking facilities located in nine Livingston Avenue. Block 12, block 13-01, 15-01, 23-4-01, so you can see four.
Members of the board, Thomas Elso, Elso and Bradshaw. To say that this has been a project that's been long in the bank would be an understatement. I think it's probably been 10 years that a whole series of people and entities have been working on it. And I'm pleased to present to you this evening the application to finally develop the long-awaited performing arts center. The application specifically is for preliminary and final site plan and minor subdivision approval to construct a 22-story mixed-use building consisting of two-level parking, a performing arts center containing two theaters, theater offices, lobby, public spaces, rehearsal spaces, two levels of additional office and rehearsal spaces, and an 18-story residential tower consisting of 207 residential apartment units. The project will also include a 7-story parking garage containing 344 parking spaces together with ballet, studio, rehearsal space. The applicant, Cultural Center redevelopment associate, Urban renewal LLC, is a designated redeVELOPER for the project. And the project conforms with the Cultural Center redevelopment plan, it fully conforms. Just as an overview, I would like to indicate to the board that the applicant and co-applicant are here specifically to present the application, but it really is the culmination of the cooperation and participation of many entities, not the least of which is Rutgers University and the Mason Grove School, the George Street Playhouse, Crossroads Theater, State of New Jersey, Middlesex County, of course, and all the other partners and partnerships that have been engaged in the development and cooperating to bring these new theaters finally to fruition. As I've indicated to you, the application fully conforms with the redevelopment plan and we hope that the board will find that the long-awaited project and the design is going to really be an asset for the future of the residents of New Brunswick and really make us the standard bearer for the cultural arts in the state of New Jersey. My intent is to call for you this evening four witnesses. We will present Chris Palladino, who is, of course, the president of the New Brunswick Development Corporation, to give you an overview of the project and build into the history how we got to where we are. Mr. David Van Freddy, who is the architect for the project from Melkens Van Freddy. Mr. Christopher Roach, our civil engineer from Langin Engineering, who will provide the engineering overview of the project. And finally, Mr. Daniel Di Sario from Langin Engineering also, who will provide a brief synopsis of the traffic review that was done for this project as part of the redevelopment plan and presented to the technical advisory committee. We hope that the board will see that a lot of time and effort and energy went into this and a lot of money is going to be expended to develop this almost $200 million project. It also indicated, as you know, that this project will have a residential tower, which is a very critical component of the project. And that, of course, will be developed, again, as a cooperative effort by Handel's Properties. But that is an overview. I would, unless the board has any questions for me, I would call Mr. Christopher Palladino.
Mr. Ray, hand state your names, by your last name, please.
Christopher Palladino. P-A-L-A-D-I. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, I do.
Chairman, members of the board. It's been a really long time since I've actually appeared before the planning board and I realized why I don't like coming back because Mr. Elso says everything that I was going to say in his opening remarks. But I'll just be really brief. I mean, look, this is the most significant broad-spectrum public-private partnership in the history of New Jersey. Mr. Elso said that it involves the New Brunswick Development Corporation, the city of New Brunswick, the New Brunswick Parking Authority, the county of Middlesex, New Jersey Economic Development Authority, Crossroads Theater, George Street Playhouse, the American Repertory Ballet, I did say Rutgers. It, I can talk about it in that context. You know, I can also talk about it in the context that it's 71,000 square feet of theater and rehearsal infrastructure. It's 220,000 square feet of residential space. It's 4,200 square feet of American Repertory Ballet rehearsal space that'll be on Baird Street. I could also talk about the amount of cars that we're going to build. But I'm going to leave a lot of that up to Mr. Van Freddy. We've been very fortunate to have a world-renowned architect as part of this team. And he's going to talk about why this is such an important and maybe the most important civic space ever built in the city of New Brunswick. But Mr. Van Freddy is really smart and very articulate. I'm sure he'll be charmed by his presentation. This building was really built for patrons of the arts in New Brunswick, in Middlesex County, in the state of New Jersey. It was built for the schoolchildren and the students that'll be part of the activities that will go on here for Rettler Con. It was designed by the actors and musicians and dancers and playwrights and directors and seamstress and set designers. Those are the people that we went to understand what we needed to build here. And what it results in is the most significant state-of-the-art performing arts facility in New Jersey. Fair enough. I mean, we're a generation away now from the Jersey Performing Arts Center Newark. And we've got everything in this building that will allow more performances on more nights by more groups to more patrons. So we've got an 80-foot fly space. There's David explaining what that is. We've got trap space. We can put a 45-piece orchestra to do opera with Rutgers in the pit. We've got rehearsal spaces. Really important, there aren't great rehearsal spaces in New Jersey. So the George Street Playhouse can rehearse in a rehearsal space that's exactly the size of the stage. The American Repertory Ballet can be doing the same thing. So that we're not using valuable stage time for those rehearsal spaces. So that we can bring community groups and people who want to rent the place and, you know, let Rutgers do a couple of extra performances. We will do over 220 in year one performances in this new space. It's about 80,000 additional patrons coming to the already busy New Brunswick Theater District, which probably today, Mr. Carter's here, is probably over 300,000 people. This is a great partnership with the State Theater. We're doing some things that maybe our engineers or David will talk about with respect to design that's going to facilitate their renovations in the future. We're doing things to improve the loading and unloading for both the State Theater and these two new theaters. And we're providing important parking that not will not only be used for the residents, but people who come to performances, people who are going to the courthouse during the day, and folks who are coming to the restaurants. You'll be able to have direct access from Baird Street through to Livingston Avenue, which we always thought was important undercover. So if any of you were kind of coming up through the rain and wanted to go to the theater with the white walkie-talkie around, you'll be able to come through the building. We really try to make this as much of a civic building as possible. And I hope, as Mr. Van Freddy and everybody else, kind of like if the story unfolds this evening, you'll agree. If you have any questions later on, I'm not going anywhere. Thanks.
Thanks, Chris. At this time, I would call Mr. David Van Freddy for testimony.
David Van Freddy, M-A-N-F-R-E-D-I. Yes.
David, you are a licensed architect of the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
That is correct.
In that capacity, you have been responsible for and familiar with all of the building architectural aspects of the design and functionality of the building as we presented this evening.
Yes, that's correct.
I would ask you if you could please give the board the benefit of your professional qualifications and experience.
I am an architect of approximately 35 years, registered about 25 states around the country. I'm a fellow of the American Institute of Architects. I sit on the advisory board of the School of Architects at the University of Better Day as well as working for the University of Boston.
I would offer Mr. Van Freddy for his qualified.
Yes.
All right. If you could then, and I know we have a number of exhibits sent, and I'm going to ask you if you could please to walk us through the building. I think it's important for the members of the public as well as the board to have a sense of all the thought and effort that went into the functionality of the building, the public spaces, the movements through the building and the office spaces, and then also the residential. And then to focus somewhat on the exterior of the building and, again, the concepts of how this building is going to look and feel to the public. And we'll mark these exhibits as we go along.
If this angle is a little bit of a public, so I'm looking through this angle that hits members.
And this may be a little bit small. Let me orient you a little bit. And I want to, you'll hear me say a number of things that really follows with what Chris called me. Because I think this is an extraordinary opportunity. It certainly is for us, but I think it is for the city of New Brunswick. Chris used the words that I always use in describing the project. We are making a new civic, important civic building in the city. And our goal is to give it real presence. Obviously, I mean architectural presence, but really what I mean is exposing the arts, putting the arts out there into the public realm. And that's what we're really trying to do is not only provide incredibly functional space, incredibly multifunctional space, as Chris described, but really expose the arts to as many people as we possibly can and the diversity of arts that can be performed in this building.
This first exhibit will be A1.
Is that part of what you're sort of providing to the board or is this?
Yes, it is.
I think I did. Has it changed any more?
No. You can refer to it.
Just refer to the exhibit that the attorney didn't present to us. We both aren't there.
This is the site plan. I mean, this could be a little bit oriented Livingston, George, and Baird Street. And that is our site. It's about approximately 1.9 acres. You'll notice, and you're looking at a site plan as well as a ground floor plan. And so the presence is really on Livingston. But as Chris described, there is connection through from there to Livingston. There are two theaters, and on the ground floor, there's a lot of space for those two theaters. There's a 465-seat, full loft, full stage, full orchestral theater, as Chris described it, and adjacent to it, a 250-seat second theater, all shared off of this, what we call this gallery space. I'll show you a rendering in a moment. But you walk in the front door, there's lobby space, there's concession and refreshment space in that lobby, all of the things that you expect to find that we do find in a Broadway theater. Then entry into the theater space itself, seating both on orchestral and lowes, but also on the balcony above. And then that gallery space that connects to the second theater. And again, you see the configuration of seating, smaller stage, a little less of all of the opportunities in the second stage than in that first stage. You can see some of the backup house, and there's a whole series of backup house. That is all serviced off of Baird, off of Lording Dock, that will continuously be shared with the State Theater. And what was mentioned, what Chris mentioned as well, is the ground floor of the new parking structure will be rehearsal space. So again, our motivation is expose the arts. Expose the arts here, not only on the first floor, but on the second floor, on the third floor, where we have rehearsal spaces. And expose the arts here, where we have rehearsal spaces. So our goals are engage and enhance the public realm by creating spaces on the street that really engage pedestrians. And at the same time, really, really use the building as a billboard for the arts. Now, I want to talk about a couple of other things on the site plan. So this is our parking structure, the seven stories, 334 spaces, entered off of Baird Street. But all of the ground floor is dedicated, and much of the front end of the ground floor is dedicated to visibility into that rehearsal space. And so all of the circulation, there's no cars, all the cars are up on those upper floors. What we want to do is really engage the street. You will see in all of our renderings that the street wall is continuous along Baird, it is continuous along Livingston. You see a reconfiguration here of what today is a kind of floating island that constricts traffic along Livingston. Our proposal is to extend the sidewalk out, create this kind of lay-by where there's drop-off for theater events as well as for the residential above, but will also enhance the traffic on Livingston. One other important feature on this ground floor is a residential lobby. And so residents are being dropped off by, will come to this front door, they'll be greeted at the door before and up beyond the arts levels to the residential above. But if you self-park in this garage and you are a resident, you will come down an elevator, you'll come through this passageway and enter directly into the residential lobby. If you are a patron of the events in the space, again, you park in that parking structure, you come down that elevator, you come totally enclosed through that same guest corridor, and you have basically direct access into the lobby and the space. So we're creating great permeability through the block because I think that enhances the, enhances the city, enhances connectivity in and around the city. I'll blow this up for you, because that would probably be very hard to see.
It's really hard for us, we can't see anything.
Well, you know what? It's tough to do in this room. If you can shift down a little bit, maybe move to the front. The board needs to see it, the public needs to see it. It's difficult to find an angle where everyone can see. I'm trying to stay back.
Can you just flip the first one over just for a second? Just to look at the one that you just had? Just for a second. Thank you.
This is a blow-up of that ground floor space. You can see a little garden more detail.
It's hard that is A1.
It's A1.
You look at the ground floor, again, Livingston, the theater lobby. You enter into a tall one-story space through this passageway. I mentioned concession bar, concierge space. And then there's a very large two-story space, a grand stair up that goes up to the balcony. And then circulation splits to go to either side into the main theater itself. This is the edge of the stage and the edge of the orchestra pit as well. Gallery space that connects the two theaters to the second theater, theater number two, the 250-seat theater. So that the intent is, there are times when there'll be a single event in one theater or a single event in the other theater. There are times when there will be events in both theaters. The point is, the arts are social. The intent is to bring people together, to be a real, truly a gathering space for the entire city and for the community while there might be two separate events going on. Everything that's in light gray is dedicated to the residential above. So the front door to that residential lobby, you can see some of the service pieces that go with that, room, package room, and mailroom, and then up that elevator. This is the passageway that I mentioned, completely enclosed, connects residents and theater guests to the parking structure. I'm going to jump up now, just to give you a sense of, I'm going to jump up actually. This will make more sense when I show you renders. I'll show you two plans. Fifth floor of the building, which is the first residential floor. That's the footprint of the building below, this is the footprint of the building above. And you can see that same elevator core I pointed to, the residential elevator core. The building is set back and separated, meaning the residential building has this kind, between the public spaces, the first work floors, and this amenity floor, there's a setback. You'll see it in the rendering in a moment. So we literally, what we're really trying to do is celebrate the theater spaces, make that the really important public civic monument. And then the residential tower kind of floats above that. And these all become common spaces to the residents. And then I'm going to go to the very top of the building, again, and you will see that at the very top of the building, we want to animate that top, the top of the building. So we have a lot of mechanical space up there, but we also have outdoor pool deck and outdoor social spaces at the top of the building. This will all make sense as I show you around the exterior.
A2.
I've got this A3.
We need to mark the first period.
Eight, the fifth floor plan, I believe, was A2.
That was part of the.
That was part of the A2.
Yeah, it's part of the set of plans, A4. Yeah.
So this is A2, this is getting confused now, right?
We're standing out in front of the Hellrich and Square, in front of the Hellrich, and looking across that square, we're actually elevated up a little bit, so we're floating a little bit. But it gives you the best sense of all of these things that we've been talking about. That is the elevation on Livingston. It is that two-story theater space, the theater space, the lobby and balcony level of theater space, the rehearsal spaces up here on 2, and ancillary, supporting the theater space, office space on the two floors above. What we've really done is, what we've tried, is give this entire base of the building stature and make it as transparent as possible. So on, up at night, this is going to be alive with people. But on the ordinary day, you're going to have rehearsals going on on that second floor space. You're going to have activity up on the floors above. As Chris mentioned, we have a rehearsal space that's the exact same size as the theater one stage space. The idea is open all that up, open the building up, see rehearsals for play, ballet, music, all happening in these spaces. So that it's active, not just Saturday night, but it's active every night of the week and during the day. That's that amenity floor that I talked about for the residential. That's the kind of scene between that big, almost proscenium frame that's out on the street and then the residential floors above. And you can see a residential building where, again, there's relatively high ratio of transparent, devoid space, meaning we're trying to create residences that get a lot of daylight that, obviously, that makes sense with the base of the building to the top of the building. And again, you can see at the top of the building that outdoor space that is an amenity for the residents. I'll give you another long view.
This will be, this will be A3.
Now I'm looking up Church Street. I'm looking up Church Street. Obviously, you can see the church on the left. But again, we're trying to create a beacon in the city. We're trying to create a place, especially at night, that will be alive with that community, that really frames the square, that engages people, engages pedestrians, really brings the arts alive in the city. And you can see the tower above, again, that's the four-story base, the fifth floor, which is the amenity floor, and then the seventh floor is residential.
I reckon I think that's Liberty Street.
Liberty Street. I'm sorry?
Liberty Street. That's Liberty Street.
I'm sorry. Give you a couple of close-ups and then we'll go around Baird and then to inside the building.
A4.
So this gives you a very good sense of the experience we're experiencing. Again, the Hellrich is on your left, you're in that drop-off area right in front of the Hellrich. You're a little bit above the ground. And you can see what our goal was, to create a space of, a frame of real importance, of real stature in the city, a lot of transparency, openness to those rehearsal spaces above, a kind of grand canopy in the tradition, but we've made it a modern element. In the tradition of the great marquises of the Broadway, of the Broadway theaters, now interpreted in a more modern way, but with some rail scale and heft to it. This isn't so much a cover for the rain as it is an announcement of an important place in the city. You can see that outdoor terrace on the amenity level and then the residences above. Our goal is to make that as transparent and engaging as we possibly can, as I say, every day of the week. And it'll do that all by itself every night of the week. We'll go around to Baird, Baird, and this will be A5. And the parking structure. The parking structure, again, really is as much a civic space as a parking facility. On the ground floor, you see the sign as American Repertory Ballet. I'm sorry, I'm seeing the way again. And that's all glass. You can see the portals into the parking itself. But that's our rehearsal space. And so lining the sidewalk will be that rehearsal space, which, again, will be active for a good number of hours a day. The parking structure itself, you can see the floors of the parking structure beyond what we're proposing is that we create these large-scale frames. These will be done in precast with color, silks and headers, subdivision banners that give this a real scale that's appropriate against color and texture to the very important buildings that are further down the street. And then a kind of cap that kind of gives this building a pop, even though it's only seven stories tall, it gives this building a kind of end up against the sky. The intent is, it's a parking garage, but it engages pedestrians of the street. It has scale on levels above grade, it has the color and texture of the important public buildings that are a little further down the street. And then I just want to show you.
If you could free move on, because I think this is an appropriate exhibit. I believe there was a question that had been asked with the department to guard in the fire and the side of that building. Could you touch upon that?
The parking structure is set back approximately five feet from the property. As we have described that in our documents, this is a completely enclosed side of the parking structure. Our ventilation comes from this north side, from the south side, we're closed on both the east and the west. This is a one-hour separation. And we have confirmation from the city that a one-hour separation is what is required by code.
All right, thank you, Mr. Steve.
And then I just want to show you one more render, a little beyond the typical discussion about the exterior. And I wanted to show you the rendering of one of the theaters. This is actually theater two. And the point is. And the point is. The point is, it goes back to my opening remarks and to Chris's remarks, these are gonna be grand spaces. These are gonna be wonderful acoustic spaces. They're gonna be incredibly flexible spaces to accommodate all of the subject uses like Chris described. We are working with a theater consultant from New York that's worked on the best theaters in the country, not only on Broadway, but around the country, and in some cases around the world. The goal is really to make, first class, internationally renowned performance spaces for a variety of the arts and treat the arts with, with given the city.
I have no further questions for Mr. Manfredi.
One quick question. Can you tell us what the existing seating capacity is in the theater versus the newly proposed seating capacity?
First, do the act's actual perspective.
Approximation's five.
Where? Existing George Street Playhouse is approximately a bit.
Approximately 200 more feet.
Between both.
We're adding 200 more feet.
Thank you. If there are no more questions, if this time I call Mr. Christopher Roach for testimony.
Can you read the written statement in spite of last name, please?
Sure, it's Christian Roach, R-O-C-H-A. Can you spell it out?
I'll do it for that.
I do.
Chris, sorry about that. Chris, you are a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
I am.
And in that capacity, you are familiar with the engineering aspects, civil engineering aspects with regard to the site plan before the board deceiving?
Correct.
If you could please give the board the benefit of your professional operations.
Mr. Roach is a contractor on this board of multiple models. I mean, it's nice to see you, Chris.
Thank you. Chris, I'll, again, I'll let you proceed with going through the site planning issues. And again, I know we need to mark certain exhibits here, so.
Sure, so this is an exhibit I can mark. We're up at A seven.
I think we're at A seven.
A seven. And what this exhibit is, it's an aerial with the proposed subdivision overlay over top of it. Before we jump into the civil engineering site plan, I want to go over the subdivision plan briefly. The entire redevelopment area is approximately 1.9 acres, and currently that's made up of three parcels. There's block 12, lot 2001, 0.78 acres. That includes the Crossroads Theater as well as the George Street Playhouse. There's block 12, lot 1501, 0.38 acres. That's the Cultural Center parking lot. And then there's block 12, lot 1301, which is 0.72 acres, and that's the TD Bank lot. And what we're looking to do as part of this application is reconfigure the lots, the area on the outside where we're staying, those will be 1.9 acres. We're gonna have two new lots. One lot will be proposed, block 12, lot 1502. That's 1.36 acres, and that will include all of our proposed development. The remaining lot will be proposed, block 12, lot 1303. That's 0.52 acres, and that will remain for TD Bank. One other thing I'll mention on the subdivision is the new lots conform both to the redevelopment plan requirements as well as the underlying zoning requirements. We're not seeing any variance as part of the subdivision plan. I'll mark this next, exhibit A eight. And it's just a rendered site plan. So Mr. Manfredi spoke about some of the programming info, I'm not gonna rehash that. I'm gonna briefly touch on some of the parking, vehicular circulation, as well as some of the pedestrian improvements, and then I'll very, very briefly talk about stormwater management and utilities. So from a parking perspective, based on the proposed development scope and existing TD Bank and the criteria of the redevelopment plan, we did a shared parking house. The amount of parking required to support development for the plan is 236 parking stalls. However, we are proposing additional parking stalls within the parking garage structure. The seven-story structure located adjacent to Bayard Street allows 744 parking stalls within the deck. And in addition to that, we have 38 surface parking stalls at the ground level. One thing I do wanna mention about the ground level parking, we're currently still working with TD Bank on the striping at this point in time. We have 15 stalls straight under this lot. And during the resolution appliance period, that may change by a stall or two. But that will be subject to the city engineer's partner view as well as TD Bank.
And I think also that would be subject to the parking authority's final sign-off in the city planning department. And it's an understanding that we have TD Bank, whose council is here this evening, some theories.
That's correct. So we do have quite a bit of surplus. There's 382 stalls proposed, 236 are required, approximately 150 additional parking stalls. I frequented this area a lot during the afternoon periods, and especially during jury duty day, sometimes it'd be very difficult to find a spot in this area. So we feel the surplus is appropriate, and we work with the parking authority developing those total parking numbers. With the garage circulation, all vehicles, my third park garage coming up Bayard Street in a more wider orientation, they'll make that left turn into the garage, and then enter a counter-focalized movement. If someone has standard parking garage format, the parking stall size in the garage generally conforms with the redevelopment plan. We have 24 foot wide aisles, it's nine degree parking, 18 foot long parking stalls. We are asking for one slight design waiver relative to the width of the parking stalls within the redevelopment plan. The requirement is 8.75 feet, which is 8 feet, 9 inches. We're requesting that be reduced to, we're getting a design waiver for 8 feet, 6 inches, which is eight and a half feet. And that's generally what we have in most complete parking authority garages. Eight and a half seems to be relatively standard, not only in the garage, but in other areas as well. Moving on from the parking at the ground level of the garage, we're proposing two loading docks to accommodate, one, the residential and the office space, and then the second loading dock that we require to accommodate the theater. And so I'm gonna switch over to exhibit that you guys have seen before, so if you need to relive this one. This is TM 101 from our site plan set that was submitted. And this is a truck turning movement for the residential and office loading docks. These vehicles typically will be a 40-foot box truck to the breeze for residential and the office. And these vehicles are capable of coming up Bayard Street, pulling caging into the garage, they're able to make a reverse movement, and that will head out, which is the ideal scenario for us, at least that will be.
Sure.
Looping this over, this is TM 102, and this is for the other loading dock. We're proposing a joint loading dock for a theater facilities, not only is this gonna serve as two new theaters, it's gonna serve as a state theater loading dock as well. And these type of shows, they have pretty large vehicles that they go on tour with. What we've been told by theater companies is we can anticipate vehicles of this size coming in probably 50 times per year, so once per week. So what we've agreed to with numerous conversations amongst folks in the city is in order to get these trucks in and out of the loading area the safest way possible, we're gonna have the trucks pull up along Bayard Street and then make a reverse movement into the loading dock. When they're ready to leave after staying for 24 hours, depending on 48 hours, depending on what performances, then they can pull head out. The reason we prefer this method is we think it offers the most safe route. A few other provisions we're gonna take with that, we're gonna try to do most of these operations in off-peak hours, very early in the morning, late at night. We'll have flagmen look out as the trucks enter and leave the facility. And we feel it's the best solution to get the trucks in and out. So we'll go back to the rendered site plan. Another benefit of having the wide entrance on the garage for the loading facility trucks is it really helps us with the pedestrian vehicular interaction at the exit point of the garage off the Bayard Street. A lot of times when you have a parking garage right up against the property line, you run into an issue where the vehicle's leaving the parking garage, sometimes have trouble spotting pedestrians. If that entrance is too small, there's walls, they can't see around it. So the city made some suggestions for it to be incorporated. But having 30-foot wide entrances opposed to a typical 1 or 2 or 4 foot entrance really increases the visibility. So cars leaving can see both directions, they can see students walking on their cellphones, headphones, I know how distracted most pedestrians are. So we're very happy with the way that turned out. The other big pedestrian improvement that we're making deals with a new crosswalk on Livingston Avenue. Typically, when the theaters let out, there's a lot of people on the streets, not everyone walks up to George Street to make a crosswalk on Livingston Avenue. So we're proposing an eight-foot wide, clean-line pedestrian crosswalk, which can accommodate traffic, pedestrian traffic leaving the theaters, and get them over to the Hellrich side of the road. A vehicular improvement that we're proposing along Livingston Avenue is we're significantly modifying the drop-off. If any of you have been after a performance today, you'll note that there is a drop-off present, it's bound by the sidewalk on one side towards the theaters, and then there's a curb line on the other side. So what happens is, it works well for the first vehicle, but if there's four cars behind that first vehicle, you're all waiting for that car. So we're proposing a six-car drop-off plan, and all of those vehicles can make movements at their own schedule. Once they make their drop-off, they can pull back out. So I'll spend 30 seconds, maybe 90 at most, on stormwater utilities. I know it's not the most popular subject in the world, but again, I'm glad. Since the majority of the site is impervious, we do not need your word quality or word quantity measures, that's underground attention. We are proposing a stormwater conveying system within the ground level of the parking garage, and the purpose for that is convey any runoff that comes into the site, root drainage out to the Bayard Street system. The second purpose of that is to make sure we don't have any runoff going out to TD Bank site from our property. The last thing with the stormwater management, we also have some root drainage from the tower in the residential office area, which is directly to Livingston Avenue. And in regard to utilities, the larger, more powerful infrastructure is located in Livingston Avenue, so that's where we'll be making our connections for PSCG gas, plus electric, water connections with the city, we'll be made on Livingston Avenue and the sanitary sewer as well. The last thing I wanted to talk about was the landscaping. You may have seen all the renderings. I was slightly behind when the renderings came out, but even how good it looked, we are gonna be adding street trees along Bayard Street. They weren't shown on the original plan, but we really like the way it turned out with the parking garage facade. We are proposing a significant amount of landscaping along Livingston Avenue, because it's kind of the main entrance to the building, so there'll be additional street trees in that area as well. From a lighting perspective, we're proposing to maintain the existing lighting on Bayard and Livingston Avenue, which meets the city standards, intending to use those existing fixtures. One thing on the lighting that we will be adding is the area between, or the open area of the building. We also some wall mounted fixtures to make sure we're maintaining the lighting of the parks in the loading areas. There was one other thing I wanted me to mention relative to an ATM that we are.
Yeah, I can put it into the record, because as part of the subdivision agreement with TD Bank, we already mentioned about the restriping and providing those spaces. The whole idea is because we're taking a certain amount of parking spaces that are on the current TD Bank site, they're being relocated onto our facility, so that they're going to have parking rights in this facility. As part of that agreement, there's also an agreement that they will be able to provide an ATM machine in the lobby, which I think you can point where that hobby is, that when you enter into the garage, it'll be appropriate signage for that ATM, so that it's identifiable and more locatable. And that's all part of the agreement with regard to these subdivisions that were acquired from TD Bank.
That covers it.
Pending agreement.
Pending. I have no further questions for Chris, I think that was it.
So can you, if you would, about the access to parking facility on Bayard Street on performance days? I'm just kinda curious, because there's a gated access on Bayard, I can see the situation, we've got 200 cars coming in there. I know we might have a traffic delay in that.
One of actually really cool things we're doing to this garage, conjunction with the parking authority, is there's not gonna be any gates on the garage. It's all gonna be done electronically, where you still do your, your typical walk to the kiosk, you make your payment. However, if you don't make your payment, Kevin from DeHosse is verifying with him, by camera, they photograph your car, and you will make your payment. It'll be a little bit more than it was, as you walk to the kiosk. But we find that's a great measure to really get vehicles in and out of the facility.
I think I would also indicate, because the parking authorities have represented, that the garage has the size to anticipate a certain amount of public parking in addition to the parking that the residents will have. And the intent here is to limit that to daily parking. So the only monthly parkers will be those that are residents in the building. And therefore, it really maximizes the use of this, it's daily parking, where in the daytime, you may have people that are coming to the courthouse, they may be coming to some kind of a presentation in the theater spaces themselves, or they could be just coming to the downtown. And those daily parkers are encouraged, and then in the evening, you'll see that turn over to patrons that are coming into the theater. Including performances beyond this, assuming in the state theater, because it'll be daily, it'll be daily partners for regular public.
Restaurants. Restaurants.
Anyone.
So you're saying, can you just tell where the office parking is going to take place at as a big moment?
Yes. So the office parking is also being provided as well.
I have one more question, too. I noticed on the place, it says sewers that is currently in the property, is that being abandoned, or are you utilizing that? It will be abandoned, and I'll get a little bit more technical on this. There is existing root drainage from the crossroads to George Street Playhouse as well as state theater, which runs through the existing cultural center parking lot, connects into the Bayard Street system. So we're gonna be abandoning and relocating that easement for a new stormwater conveying system. So it's still gonna serve the same purpose of getting the drainage, this portion of the site, have the Bayard Street system slightly modified. So it's simply redesigned, you're gonna ban the original, the original plan, and you're still gonna allow that runoff to go into the, into the stormwater system like it is currently, that's? Correct.
Can you just clarify for me the elevator access in the parking that when you exit the street, get down on the Livingston, does that put you back out on the Livingston avenue, or do you, does it put you into the building? So if someone was accessing the state theater, would they be on the street, or would they be in the theater?
I'm not sure if I understand the question. From this elevator, or the?
Or the other elevator.
The elevator, yes.
Third one. So you'll be able to, like, roll some of the time, use the elevator that's here, take it down to the ground level, and come through the enclosed walkway, which is the hallway, and take your access to Livingston Avenue, walk down to the state theater. Or to state's last doors, these theater work.
Do you have no other questions? That completes Chris's presentation. At this time, I would call Daniel Disario for testimony.
Great right-hand state names, but elected. Certainly Dan, last name is D-I-S-A-R-I-O, Disario. Any sort of conclusions about it? Yes, sir.
Sorry, you are a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
Yes, I am.
And I think your area of expertise is one of traffic study?
Yes, it is.
And in that capacity, you were asked to provide a traffic, brief review of traffic statement for this project?
It was.
And in performance with the redevelopment plan and provided to the city. If you could then, could you please give the board the benefit of your professional qualifications and experience?
Certainly, bachelor of science in civil engineering from Temple University, master of science in transportation engineering from NJIT, licensed professional engineer state of New Jersey, as well as several other states, have been qualified and accepted as an expert in traffic engineering for 200 boards throughout Jersey and New York.
Can we go over Mr. Disario?
Yes. Thank you.
If you would then, could you just give us the general overview of the charge that you were given with respect to studying of this site and traffic components? And go through the methodology, and if you could give us your conclusions with respect to that?
Certainly, I won't take too much time. I think traffic relative to this project is not a significant aspect of the project. You've heard earlier, we're essentially taking down two theaters, putting up two theaters. Really, the new land use components that are part of this project consist of the office space and the residential. If you look at what those two land uses we generate by way of traffic in terms of estimate, and you assume that none of the residents, when you mass transit to go to work every day, which certainly is not the case, we would anticipate a lot of residents who would walk to work as well. And if you also assume that everyone else that works in the office would take the car to drive to the office as opposed to taking mass transit and walking to this site to come to work. In terms of estimated traffic generation associated with the residential and office based on published trip rates, we would anticipate during a weekday morning peak hour, generally one hour between seven and nine in the morning, you'd have about 70 vehicles coming into the site associated with the residential and office, and about 50 during that hour leaving the site. Similarly, during the weekday evening peak hour, you'd have, on average, about 55 vehicles that would be coming in, about 80 vehicles that would be leaving. Again, that's assuming no one takes mass transit or walks. The residents that live at this site, keep up with work in the proposed office space. The residents that live at this site keep up with work and the proposed office space. When you start to look at what that amounts to in terms of the surrounding roads, the board's very familiar with the area. There's multiple ways to get in and out of this area. Granted, all of the traffic will access this specific site off of Bayard Street. Once you get beyond Bayard, there's plenty of roads that take you into and out of the city and to this specific area. So really boil it down, we're looking at no more than about one vehicle, little more than one vehicle permitted in any direction at normal speed hours. In addition, there was previous studies done as part of looking at the NEPA process, which is the National Environmental Protection Act review process. A detailed traffic study was done as part of that process, and the conclusion of that study was that all of the intersections immediately surrounding the site, both signalized intersections as well as stop-controlled intersections, all operate at a level of service of A or better. Levels of service go from A to F, with A being very favorable operations and F being non-favorable operations. I can tell you anecdotally and by observation, I live in South Brunswick, I come to New Brunswick all the time. Now, Mr. Carly is going to laugh at me because I always relate the story when I testify in areas of the facility. I have gone to George Street Playhouse, and I'm not bashful to admit, I have seen Ken Chee in the holiday show. That was for my wife, so I did a good thing in terms of being hugged. So my experience with the area is consistent with the findings of that previous traffic study in that surrounding intersections around this site don't operate with any issues. I would anticipate if you went out there and looked at operations today, if you're inclined to grant approval and this site was built as proposed before you this evening, you would not be able to perceive any noticeable changes in traffic operations. I'll leave you with one last point. As Mr. Roach described to you, along Bayard Street right now, there's a surface parking lot that the parking authority runs. There's two curb cuts along Bayard Street that serve that surface parking lot. As part of this project, we're consolidating those two curb cuts into one point of access to serve the surface parking as well as the parking garage. Eliminating a curb cut, essentially taking two curb cuts and consolidating them down to one, is a safety benefit to the moderate public, which should reduce some conflict points along Bayard Street, but more importantly, it's also a benefit to pedestrians that are walking along Bayard Street. You don't have to be confronted with two curb cuts that exist today, and they'll be confronted with only one curb cut in the future as part of this project. With that, we have the answer to your questions.
Can I have the other question?
Can you interject at Bayard and Kirkpatrick? Do you know what the rating was for, could I imagine, in the morning, at any one?
The rating for Bayard and Kirkpatrick Street, both in the morning and the evening, was it B or better?
Is, if the Bayard Street wide enough to accommodate two vehicles sitting across such that, for whatever reason, there is traffic getting into the facility, that there is sufficient safe pass, how is it able to access the site?
Yes, if you recall, along that side, the side side of Bayard Street, there is on-street parking. When you get to the vicinity of the proposed driveway, there will be any on-street parking. So if somebody's turning into the proposed driveway, they'll essentially be in that parking lane. So there will be sufficient room for somebody to bypass somebody trying to turn into the proposed driveway, not an issue at all.
I have one question. On TRC, we talked about eliminating or blocking parking space on the top of Bayard Street so the track to care was to make that newer and back. How's that going to get before so much as...
I'm going to defer to Mr. Roach. That's going to be during limited instances, we're going to block off those parking stalls. We will have advance notice when these trucks are coming in, and we'll work with the parking authority as necessary. So a condition?
That'll be a condition?
Yeah.
And how many trucks at what time can you get in? Just two?
You can get two.
Two, yeah. I just wanted to clear on the parking itself and other spaces, because the plans have a conflict between 344 and 382.
So 344 is the amount of parking stalls within this structured garage? When you incorporate the ground level parking stalls into the bank, ground level of the garage, that's going to create a difference?
And also, the redevelopment requires you to provide the parking for bicycle storage. And though you increased it, can you just talk about that a little bit on the plan where that's going to be and how it's going to be protected?
Sure, and I may, you know, take a little bit of this, but the bike storage, the vicinity of the garage, I think I...
So you're still a little shy from the order that you want?
We were. We did update our program numbers, though we do need it.
Okay.
We just double-checked, and there are restrooms required, so we need to detail three times. I think we ended up needing eighty-five, and now we have eighty-eight.
Okay.
And David, I was pointing to the relocation.
You are.
That's inside the building?
Eighty-three of the eighty-eight are inside the building.
How do you get to, just to be like a rough idea, how would a person with a bicycle show, how would they get into that space?
Basically, through the same portals as the...
As vehicles?
Yes.
Just to be careful.
That's right. And I give them stripes separately.
I did want to, in my report, I did ask about the facade of the parking structure itself. I noticed in the test morning, you did, it's a textured material with the signage. That's basically what it's going to be now?
Yes, what we're proposing is precast panels on the outside. They will have color and they will have texture.
Okay.
If that's all the questions the board of professionals have, then that completes our presentation.
Can I ask a question?
Do you want to make comments? You need to come up to the front and you've sworn in.
Okay. Okay, that's the comment. We have to get it recorded. You're being recorded here.
I don't want Charlie recording tonight. We have our own recording.
Sir, can you read your right-hand statements by your left hand, please?
My name is Simon Arroyo. Last name is B E N R O Y N.
Any sort of conclusions about it?
So just a quick question. It's a very tall building, and we know that we have tall buildings, we have a lot of wind down the ground level and even higher winds above, so I'm curious if there's some sort of wind studies of this building for the ground level as well as for all the buildings that surround this building?
Hello, you know, that's what... It's not a plan.
No, I know. This is Mr. David. He's been asking this question for a long time, so I didn't...
But he is an engineer.
We have not done a wind panel test. I can tell you that the real benefit of having this kind of podium and tower above is wind collects on the long surfaces of the building and then comes down the face of the building. What the podium allows is a place for that wind to land, not on the sidewalk, but on that podium beside the floor.
And the large...
And, yeah, exactly. The tower itself sits right about here, so there's podium on the end, but there's also the fly loft and all of the roof over the north side of the building.
So essentially, the marquee is acting kind of like a reverse setback?
That's a great point, too. Thank you. The marquee protects, here, you can see it, any wind that collects off that surface. This is a very broad marquee, it's about fifteen feet wide. It, again, provides that kind of protection for the pedestrian at the front doors of the building and pedestrians that are simply walking along the sidewalk.
Can you read your right-hand statements by your left hand, please?
Sure. So I'm here, H G H I R.
All truth to this matter?
Yes. So how many do you want? I'm going to read some comments from Diane Feldman. I'm a member of the Head Park Commission for Universal Access, and Diane is a member of the commission. She wanted to submit them electronically, because it's the Jewish holidays, right, and was told from the written page to read them, so I'm going to read her comments. She emailed them to me and called me today to discuss them.
Could I just ask you a question?
Of course.
These comments that I think we've already received...
Did you, I don't know, because she was...
She sent them to us.
And was that acceptable that way? Because she was told that she had to, someone had to present them, they couldn't accept them electronically, if anyone...
Yeah, they, you can't just accept written comments, or is it they had, someone had to be here to present them so that you had the opportunity to discuss them?
So would you like me to read them, correct? Okay. So to the question, Planning Board from Diane Feldman, a member of the Head Park Commission for Universal Access, subject comments on the new Brunswick Cultural Center redevelopment plan. On January nineteenth, twenty seventeen, I met with several representatives of Devco and two architects for the new complex, Andrew Goetz and Dan D., my apologies for pronouncing it wrong. Jean Holtz, Devco, had arranged the meeting because I had expressed interest in accessibility in the theaters. Although most of our discussion dealt with wheelchair accessibility, we also discussed assistive listening devices. For many years, I had been reviewing Head Park Planning Board applications for accessibility, and I wanted to do likewise for this exciting project. Andrew and Dan brought blueprints for the building, and we reviewed them. There were four specific areas which we discussed, either at the meeting or in email exchanges afterwards. I have looked at the updated plans published on the Brunswick website, and would like to address each of these areas. The first area is restrooms, family restrooms. Family restrooms and enclosed room with one toilet and one sink have been added to the plan. There appears to be one on the main level and two on the balcony level. These are a great addition. The signage for these should indicate standing figures as well as the International Symbol for Accessibility. And she just wanted to confirm how many family restrooms per floor, and are they fully accessible?
The numbers are correct, and they are fully accessible.
Great, thank you so much. Placement of women's and men's restrooms. The configuration of the women's and men's restrooms on the main level has changed since our January discussion. Looking at the current proposal, I would suggest swapping the women's restroom with the men's restroom. Typically, there is a line for the women's restroom, and this may block the entrance to the men's restroom. If the two genders were reversed, the line for the women's restroom could go by front of the men's restroom door. Suggestion. Sinks in the men's restroom.
We're hoping that all of the new restrooms will alleviate the lines.
So it's a suggestion. Sinks in the men's restroom. The plan only shows one sink in the men's restroom and a floor in the ladies' room, so should they have the same numbers, or question?
The fixture count is actually determined by code, but we're happy to go back and verify that.
We think it's just misrepresented of it.
Perhaps, yeah.
Because it only had one, and I can imagine going to one, so the counter results on three will add additional sinks.
Very good. And then wheelchair and companion seating, the number of wheelchair seats. At the meeting in January, wheelchair seating was identified on the blueprints of the International Symbol of Accessibility. There now appears to be a different graphic for wheelchair seats, parallel lines with feet, on pages three and four of this report on copies of the blueprints. She indicated where she thought there was the wheelchair seating, so this is going on what, you know, she was assuming there are. In the larger theater, five on the main level and two in the balcony, and in the smaller theater, three on the main level and one in the balcony. And according to Table 221.2.1.1 of the 2010 ADA Standards for Accessible Design, the smaller theater requires five seats. I have attached the relevant page of the standards on page five. I would suggest placing this on the opposite side of the balcony from the one existing, the one existing accessible seat. So just to make sure the wheelchair seat in that theater. Companion seating and fixed versus movable chairs. According to Section 221.3, quote, "At least one companion seat shall be provided for each wheelchair space required by 221.2.1." According to the ADA 2010 requirements for ticket sales, quote, "People purchasing a ticket for an accessible seat may purchase up to three additional seats for their companions in the same row, and these seats must be continuous with the accessible seat." Accessible seats may be used as companion seats. And she includes some information on that. Because both requirements must be satisfied, using movable chairs for the companion seats offers flexibility in terms of the ticket sales, and her suggestion, which was discussed with the architects in January, and they were opposed to this idea, that multiple chairs would be similar in comfort to the fixed seating available elsewhere in the theater, including with respect to upholstery of the arms, et cetera. Okay, for that. And then line of sight requirements for the wheelchair seating. In Section 221.2.3, wheelchair spaces still provide spectators with choices of seating locations and viewing angles that are substantially equivalent or better than the choices of seating locations and viewing angles available to all other spectators. While most of the wheelchair seats meet this requirement, the two in the balcony of the larger theater do not. They are off to the sides. While most of the balcony seating is directly facing the stage, and even with the architects in January, we discussed relocating these two wheelchair seats to the front of the major seating area. This does not appear to have been done, and thus, the balcony seating does not meet the requirement, so it's possible to change that. And designated aisle seats. These aisle seats will have removable arms so that a person using a wheelchair can transfer into the seat. According to Section 221.4, quote, "At least five percent of the total number of aisle seats provided shall comply with 802.4 and shall be the accessible seats located closest to the accessible rounds." Although this requirement was discussed in email exchanges after our January meeting, I cannot discern where the seats are identified, so she didn't see that on the plan. And then the other comment she had to, just to mention today, was the floor outlet plate with a cover located in the wheelchair space if possible, for folks who would need to maybe plug it about a liter. And she thanks you for consideration of these ideas, and feel free to reach out for any questions. And then, of course, just with respect to the whole project, residential, the parking, et cetera, everything, providing, you know, handicapped accessible apartments, adaptable apartments, and the correct parking, you know, the department, et cetera, all of that.
And we'll do all that. We thank Diane for all the comments.
Very good, thank you. And so would you like, did you want this?
I'm very excited.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this, we, we, we really do appreciate all the efforts of the cell and network has put into this, and we'll make, we'll take all of these under consideration and actually point out what we've already done, and we'll review it there again, because she's been a big help.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hi. Can you read your right-hand statements by your left hand, please?
Tom Kartho, K-A-R-T-O, CEO of the State Theater. And sort of pretty much better. I just want to say real quickly that the State Theater, Devco, and the county have been working on this since day one, and we've been very involved in this planning. This is a very exciting time for downtown New Brunswick. I ran a performing arts center in Madison, Wisconsin for seven years, and the performing arts center being downtown in the middle of Middlesex County is going to be even more vibrant than it is now. There are many, many opportunities with the synergies between George Street, Crossroads, ARB, and the State Theater. We already partner with them in a really wonderful way. There's even more down the road. The county has already incurred some money to put together what we call a ticket consortium. We have a platform called Tessa Turo, which is one of the top ticketing platforms in the world, and we're creating a ticketing consortium with the other user groups that will really intensify their ability to have donor patron databases and be able to identify their audiences. We've been working with Devco. We, we're going back and forth about concerns about access to the loading dock, especially during construction, and they've been very transparent and very open about working with us. We bring in a quarter of a million people, just the State Theater, a quarter of a million people a year to downtown New Brunswick. So our operations are very vital. We have four hundred and twenty events a year with three hundred and sixty-five days. So we want to make sure that we maintain that operational capacity. We are undergoing our own renovations in the next four years. We're staging that, and when this is all done in 2021, our one-hundredth anniversary, it's going to be a very celebratory moment for New Brunswick to have arguably one of the best downtown arts districts in the country. So again, thanks to Devco, thanks to the county. It's a very exciting time.
Thank you.
Yeah. You know, I just want to add something, it's not necessarily purview of the...
It's not necessarily per view of the planning board, but this project does include 20% set aside for affordable units. Certainly, notice doesn't change anything with respect to the second approval. But we are working with the Actors Fund with the hope of encouraging those involved in the arts, performing arts, musicians, dancers, stagehands, and then people even in the visual arts to actually take advantage of those opportunities so that not only are people coming here to perform, but those artists are here 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. It really does deserve some good hands in the community.
Can you read your right-hand statements by last name, please?
Patrick Flarn, C-L-A-R-K.
Anything you sort of reading this matter?
Yes. I'm glad you spoke about affordable housing, so that was actually one of my questions. And I just really had some questions and concerns. First of all, I appreciate the investment in ours. It's really great to see that sort of attention given to the women's and have them, and that investment we give to the city. I just have some concerns really about the compatibility with the surrounding land uses. North of that area, it's predominantly commercial. It's high-rise residential, or high-risk commercial mixed use. But on the southern end of that, where the residential districts are, it's medium density, one to two family homes. It'd be really interesting to swing this perspective around and do this from a residential neighborhood. Because when you're coming down Livingston Ave, that Eldridge Center building is already formidable building, and it stands out a lot. I can't imagine a 22-story building coming down in that. So this structure, it's going to have a significant impact on that primarily residential corridor, and I think some considerations that needs to be given. It's a huge building, I think, of this area, and some thought, just considerations need to be given. More is the bulk in height of the building. Historic structures are nearby. There's offices of the State Theater, this City Hall building. And if you look outside this building, it's hard to imagine a 22-story building directly adjacent to this. If you look out the window, you probably won't be able to see the top of it. So that's going to have a significant impact. So I just want to express those concerns. This residential area is predominantly middle income, middle class. But I see the affordable housing set aside that should help the context and the surrounding area. But like I said, I'm not confident in compatible with the surrounding land uses.
Can you read your right-hand statements by last name, please?
Ashley Conway, C-O-N-W-A-Y.
Anything you sort of reading this matter?
I have two quick questions and comments. One of my questions was, I've noticed in new buildings that have gone up, a new building will go up, it'll be pretty good-looking, and then billboards get slapped on it with really garish lights. And I mean, looking at the building, I'm like, okay, there's no place to put a billboard, but on some of them, I've seen spaces as small as this with billboards and then lights to light them up. My question is, are there plans or is it allowable to have these kind of advertisements on this building?
Our plan is the only advertising, which will only be advertising events at the theaters.
But you know what I'm talking about. The RWJ thing was on the parking structure at the View and...
Those did get slapped on. Those were planned and approved and forgiven. So that was something that was... So that's, so here we go. So at, the most likely will be the name of the building on the, on the...
Marquee.
On the marquee. This will be a video board, which will not have animation, but it will say, "George Street Playhouse presents tonight, West Side Story." And that will be for a while, and then it could, ARB will be starting, amazing gross. It's quite possible. The only other people who may use this, and we haven't talked about it, is the State Theater, may want to use that for advertising, particularly maybe when they're in the construction part. There will be no other billboards on this building, except that if eventually we do do a naming rights before the project, that on the, on the... But I know exactly what you mean. And we do have some great blank walls here. Excuse me, Chris. Yep, I wonder if the top of the building, excuse me. But these blank walls that you see will not have any Mr. Patterson, whatever it was.
Okay, that addresses my concern, which is...
At the View, we did that as part of the design to really distract people from seeing unattractive parking garage.
It should be unattractive. It's new. Anyway...
It's too pretty to go on the buyer's website, trying to have banners.
So, anyway, I live in Eldridge. And what I don't want to have happen is for us to open our blinds and see a billboard that's lit up all night. So, and the lights are bad enough. The lighting is, is way too great.
And I mean, quite honestly, even with that lighting that's that gray, if the city requires us to turn that off at a certain time, it's a problem.
My other question is for parking. I wondered, and if you're concerned about the height of this, the person who is right before me, the building that's approved for New Street, that's between the Elks Club and New Street parking structure, is very tall. Do you remember how tall that is? It's taller than this one.
I actually think it's approximately the same height.
Oh, the same height, on a very, very small footprint with no parking. So it's already extremely hard to leave our complex, and we all have assigned spaces, we own our spaces, we have parking. But it's, right now, it's really difficult to leave our structure and go out to New Street. This is before the new high-rise. When there's two new high-rises, I just really question whether the parking is going to be as A-B grade as is being suggested. Because my experience now is that it's more like a D. And if you're a pedestrian, it is abysmal. Pedestrian safety in New Brunswick is as bad as any big city I've ever been.
Yeah, just this parking garage with two blocks from here to where you can have. But one of the things, I think, is important to know, and that we're saying, and Mr. Flarn is, Mr. Flarn is actually here, and Mr. Barnhart, who are actually, who owns the View. In that building, there's 197 units, and more two-bedrooms than we have here, because this is much, this has more one-bedrooms and studio apartments than two-bedrooms. And out of that 197 apartments, there's only 145 cars parked in the garage. What we are seeing more and more is couples having one car, and actually people not having any cars. You know, if you look at other cities like Jersey City, we're tearing down parking garages that were originally built as part of apartment buildings that built more apartments. So we're kind of hoping that although we have enough parking for everybody that's required by the ordinance for this building, that we will have that. And we'll have more people, more spaces available for people who come to the city in the evening to go to the theaters and to dinner and, you know, other things.
Great. I, I just wanted to go on record to say that the traffic situation, you know, if you come in for the occasional Candy G concert, it may appear to be fine. But if you live down here 365 days a year, the parking or the traffic particularly for pedestrians is not so good. And even if the residents don't appreciably add to that mass of cars, if everything's working right for these three theaters, there should be way more cars.
Coming from this...
So I, I just hope the city is ready to deal with that and that something is done for pedestrian safety. Because right now, you have to gird your lines when you're going to cross an intersection because it's quite dangerous. It really is. So that was my parking issue, my billboard issue. The comment I wanted to make is that I really appreciate getting notice of this variance so that those of us who are directly affected could be here to talk to the planning board. However, I really wish that at the front end of this project, before everything was a done deal, that we would have gotten the same kind of little registered letter. Because finding information out about this, this project has been very difficult. I've gotten most of my information from New Brunswick today, and it shouldn't have been that way. We should have been apprised of what was going on every step of the way and invited to be part of this discussion. I think that this is a very outsized building for New Brunswick. I mean, you can see in one of these, it shows how dwarfed our building is by this. And when they put the one up on New Street, we're going to be sandwiched in between two monstrosities. As attractive as it is, it's very attractive, but it's really big. And I would have thought after putting Spring Street up, which is a really lovely building, that maybe the planning board would have said, well, maybe not so much. We don't want New Brunswick to look like that. It's, it is what it is. I'm glad that it's going to be here. I think it would be a great addition. I just have some concerns in. And I hope that the planning board will do other things to make, to help support this gargantuan building and all the people that are moving into all of these new rental and condo structures downtown. More green space, better pedestrian safety, and other things that need to be implemented for quality of life. Because right now, I don't think New Brunswick is living up to its potential in that department. So those are my comments.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add a couple of comments here on the project that's going on on New Street. There is parking on site, both on the site and in the parking deck next to it. That, that does have parking over there.
No, it relies on New Street.
The project on New Street has parking. The, just kind of like talked about needing more green space in downtown. We couldn't agree with her more, which is why the Wilson Deck is coming down, and we're putting a park down there. That's a very important aspect in New Brunswick that really needs, need to have more of that, that kind of space. And as to the notice, the notice follows what the Bristol Landings Law allows. And there was a case in Edison about 15, 20 years ago that said towns are not allowed to do additional, require additional notice beyond what the Bristol Landings Law allows. Can't do it, I think, as part of that. So that's the only notice that we are allowed to do. So we tried to put it on our, you know, our website. You know, Mr. Paladino has paid a lot of money to a lot of populations people. They got a lot of stories out about this, this project. We tried to get some...
Just people are...
Oh, sure, just love them, bro.
We, we did, we got notice of the New Street building at its conception, and we were able to sue them, and then...
Okay.
And what, what, no, I think it's...
That was the same notice.
No, I think it was one thing, because...
That's all the developers allowed to do. It's all the town is required, allowed to require of the developer, these notices. You can't require more.
Yeah.
May be good to, to have more, but there's a case hold that we can't do.
To, to truly be charmed by this project and to live here, it would have been optimal to have been part of this process from the beginning.
Well, in the future, just call us. Because people have, people have come to talk to us about this, the Blue Men's Fellman and some others. So as we do other things that are interested, just call us.
Thank you.
I want to go figure that out.
If I can read your right-hand statement by last name, please?
My name is Thalia, T-H-A-L-Y-A, last name R-E-Y-E-S, Thalia Ray.
Can you sort of read this matter?
Yes. So I have some clarifying points about the affordable...
Mr. Ray, you might, we have a quarter up here. Can you be a little closer?
So I have some clarifying questions about the affordable housing units. What will be the set rate for the affordable housing units? And what will the, will they be one bedroom, what allocation will be?
Hi. Would you like to sort me in before I answer? Thank you.
Read your right-hand statement by last name.
Richard Barnhart, B-A-R-N-H-A-R-T.
Sort of reading this matter?
Okay, so the breakdown of the affordable housing, there are 207 units in the proposed hour, and of those, 20% will be affordable. So that's 42 units. Rents will range between $550 and $1400. And the allocation between units, as Chris mentioned earlier, large proportions of one bedrooms, some studios, some two-s.
And the 20%, I will, 20% will be the same proportion as the rest of the building.
Identically sized, identically renovated.
All access to all of the amenities to everybody who lives in the building.
Thank you. I have two follow-up questions, not related to the housing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
So the second question was about the nickel process and the noise, the potential noise from these several projects that are going on across the neighborhood. Could anyone who knows about noise pollution due to this project and the surrounding projects, give any details about that?
Which of those?
Well, the construction of the cultural center and then also the hub.
This isn't required to follow, at least from the city standpoint.
We did admit the city has noise standards, that they would have to follow as a line of construction, start and ending, and have an end line.
And those are just mean as well.
Yeah. Plus, if we had one of the cities, I know what we can enforce. If there's a state regulation on that, that would be up to the state to enforce that.
Okay. Thank you for the clarifying point. The last one was about the storm drainage, the storm water drainage down to Bayard. It's on, it already floods pretty regularly for very small amounts of rain within short periods of time. So I wanted to get clarifying points about storm water.
This is the first time I've been asked a stormwater question in here, so I'm trying to...
Very excited about it.
So here's the deal with the storm water on Bayard Street right now. We discovered this during a four-month process with the city engineering department. The issue on Bayard Street was, there was a combined sewer line, which means not only did storm water go into the sewer, but sanitary sewer went in. So that's bad for a number of reasons. Financially, the city's paying a lot more for the treatment fee, because not only are we treating sanitary sewer, we're treating storm water as well. So what we agreed to do has been one of the many good deeds as part of this project, is we're going to reroute our storm sewers. So all the storm drainage coming from Art Development is going to have a dedicated storm sewer line, which is going to tie into the George Street system. And what that means is only storm water will be going through that pipe at this point, which is going to significantly reduce the flood. And by doing so, we hope that will alleviate any of the issues on Bayard Street.
So the, so the sanitary, sanitary line from the residencies and from the building itself are going to go to...
Burchi?
So...
What, what's the...
Yes. So anything in this area on the ground surface and from the parking garage is going to go into Bayard Street. This is all new lines, except for the sanitary line, and it's going to go to George Street. Got a dedicated line. Anything within the tower is going to go down to Lewis and Avenue, please, this is our system. Thank you.
Can you read your right-hand statements by last name, please?
Alison W-ing-F-I-L. Okay, I guess my main question is related to the parking that is on the site. How did you determine that there is a need for parking in excess of what the city requires?
So we worked throughout this process. It wasn't just a stand on ourselves. We worked with the Brooklyn Parking Authority, and it's just here, Park Authority, to really kind of analyze this area and then result in a need-based matrix. Related not only to shared parking houses, we did for all of our proposed developments, but for the surrounding areas as well. How much, do you frequent this area much, or are you a daily owner?
Yes, I go to school.
Okay.
So I walk around here.
Would you agree that there's probably a need for additional parking?
No.
Okay, so you have an added option for...
So I, anytime that I have wanted to park somewhere, I've been able to find parking. I might have to walk an additional two minutes, but it's always been easily available, especially in the parking decks. There seems to be a glut of parking available from my experience.
I gotta talk to you about your parking.
There is a strategy.
The other thing that comes into play too is there's an economic scale. When we're constructing a parking deck, you're not going to construct a parking deck for 20 stalls. I know it's a gross exaggeration. So based on our conversations with the parking authority, we felt that seven stories and 44 stalls turned out to be a right number.
So if you were to do less of a parking structure, could you have more apartment units instead and recoup the money that way? And like, is there, is this a needs-based decision to have that much parking? Because it does seem to be a lot, especially like given the number of parking garages that are around here and are within a walking distance. And since a lot of the development in New Brunswick has been kind of transit-oriented development and there is like a push towards that, it seems like this is a different kind of development where there is this... So much parking.
The short, the short answer is, as you had your first question, you may ask, that yes, we do feel this is the need for parking.
And what's that based on?
Based on the amount of usage of the other garages in the area, based on the traffic studies. This is a human number we came up with that we felt was appropriate.
Has there been a parking study done to see what the use actually is at different times?
I'm going to go through the...
Okay.
Right-hand state, your names by last name?
Rich Tarr, K-I-R-A-R. So we based the size of the garage, what the, what it requires as far as the space is, the potential. Do our, do our space, and also we have the cultural center lot, which is covered there, which also surprises me. Different spaces, and then you have the bank block too, which is called the second space total. So basically, we did a study to see what the demand is. So based on the residential, the demand from the courthouse, which comes with the cultural center lot, the office space that is considered, let me back up, it's considered an mixed-use facility. So you're going to have users during the day, and use at night. One of the things we're looking at is the Church Street garage fills on weekends. Every Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, there's an overflow. We have to send it to the gateway commercial. Allenway, right, this garage also captures that overflow somewhat. So based on that overflow and all the numbers that we had, we felt that this is the proper size of the garage.
Okay, so I guess my final question will see, is the goal to provide the most convenient parking rather than to actually address what is needed? Where you are just providing it in a very convenient location where there could be enough parking if somebody were to walk a little bit further?
It goes hand in hand. I don't disagree. People don't like to walk though. So they assume there's no parking. So to park the wellness and walk across town to, you know, let's say the even State Theater. Yeah, people don't do that. They, they complain it's not a problem. So actually, this is very convenient for the uses of the cultural center, the State Theater, and the courthouse, because we have the current deck. And by making it convenient, people will be wanting to.
I think based, going off of the concerns previous people have mentioned, over pedestrian safety, I think maybe the added traffic volume would be a bad thing and having more people walking around the streets would be a good thing, especially given the like thrust of development in New Brunswick has been towards transit-oriented development and encouraging walking and alternative modes of transportation. And then I did have one more question. I think, Chris, you mentioned that there was a plan to remove a lane of parking on Bayard?
I didn't mention that.
Oh, okay.
Chris back.
Oh, sorry, sorry. So the, um, so the plan to remove the lane of parking, is there going to be anything in its place? Or you're just going to take the parking way and leave the street really wide?
When we say remove parking, we're going to temporarily park them all, but we need to get those theaters closed. So Mitch will be, not Mitch, his crew will be out there. Get that in a minute.
Sometimes you gotta do, why get stuff on your head yourself?
Just temporarily take away this parking.
Okay.
It'll be, you know, once a week, once every week and a half when the theaters are coming in, we'll try and minimize the disruption.
Okay, that makes sense. And then one more question, I don't know if it's for you. The crosswalk down here, the mid-box crosswalk, is there going to be any sort of treatment for that in terms of like, are there going to be crosswalk signs that are lit or anything like that to kind of draw attention since cars can kind of go fast through there and they might not necessarily be paying attention?
So we have an application in Middlesex County right now. Typically, we do like to just walk across the street. We'll see if we have a kind of standard like three-foot-high pedestrian crossing sign. If the county will permit us to put those, we'll have those in. We'll also have a pedestrian sign with the pedestrian, the arrow on both sides of the road. At this point, I don't think we're looking at a flashing pedestrian crosswalk.
Do you think that would be beneficial since mostly it will be used at night by people who are attending events at the center?
It could be, and I think the way the process is, it's a boss, enforcement, trash documents, that was covered out in the county.
Okay.
Being a county road, they're kind of real decision maker on that.
Yeah. Okay, thank you so much, Eric.
Chris, I heard folks have commented with the activity there in the evening, that should also make an area where cars do tend to go a little bit slower because there will be a lot of pedestrian activity on the street and that should help reduce speeds and make both pedestrians and motorists more aware of their, their surroundings. The street, that block particularly is not set up as a, as a speedway. Now there's a lot of activity going on, which helps calm the traffic out there. And we're also looking at doing a road die along Lee's Avenue farther up the street, which should help put motorists in a calmer way to go there, if that lasts long.
Charlie, we can hear your right-hand state, your last name?
Charles Cradaville, C-R-A-T-O-V-I-L.
Sort of a little bit better?
Thank you, Charles Cradaville from New Brunswick, editor of New Brunswick Today. Great meeting. I think we're running it very well. I'm glad that the developer has representatives, the partner has a representative, the parking authority has a representative. You know, credit where credit's due. I did have the pleasure of attending another meeting where some of these same folks came to pitch this same idea to the housing authority. And I think at that meeting, there was a different number of apartments that was set. It was like 249?
Yes.
Yeah, can you just tell me why? Has there been a change made? And are, is the developer going to have to go back to the housing authority?
I can answer why the change is made. We think the building works better. We actually brought the tower in to make a little more dower and we lost a lot of apartments down the side of the building. So it really functions better, not as long hallways. And yeah, it's, you know, more out as being able to lose those apartments. As for us having to go back to chickadee amendment, I would ask Mr. Kelso.
Generally, what's provided to the authorities is concept plan, and that's what they actually approve, concept plan. They don't provide specific requirements as long as it's in conformance with the redevelopment plan, which this plan is. And ultimately, it's subject to what the planning board approves. So it's really the planning board that controls the detail.
And we don't have an agreement yet.
No, the agreement's not signed.
So when there's an agreement, it'll have the appropriate number of...
The redevelopment agreement will ultimately contain, if the planning board would see fit to approve it, it would include what's actually in the resolution.
And who would be the parties to the redevelopment agreement?
It's the redeveloper, which is the cultural center.
Urban redevelopment, so it's urban renewal.
You are, right. And the housing authority. Is it true that there's currently contract negotiations, negotiations going on with the city regarding this building?
I don't know what that's relevant to site plan. I don't know, they couldn't answer that question.
Good.
No.
Okay. Pretty sure that there are. I was reading the agenda at the Middlesex County Freeholders' meeting and I saw that they were going into closed session.
You said the city. You mean the county.
Well, but it said negotiations with the city of New Brunswick.
No, no, it didn't.
Okay, well, can you enlighten me on what was going on in secret session?
You asked for those things to be put on, put on the website, then you don't read them accurately. And then you asked me the question last Thursday night, and I told you I wouldn't answer the question with regard to what the county discusses in closed session.
Okay, I don't understand why the county's having a discussion in closed session. And my question was, who was Mr. Kelso representing in that closed session?
I know what your question was, and I was representing. It's not relevant to this, but I'll answer his question. I represent the county.
Representing the county, okay, and the negotiations are ongoing?
Yes.
Okay, and what exactly is, is at state?
Not going to answer that question, Charlie.
Okay.
Not going to answer. You've asked it before and you're not going to get an answer to it.
Okay, forgive me for wanting to know what negotiations are going on with the government about this building.
You get to know what you're entitled to under the law, and as soon as you're entitled to it, all you got to do is ask me, I'll tell you.
Okay, and is there a timeframe?
No.
No, okay. I do want to ask about the, well, first I want to ask why Penrose was selected. Is Devco not capable of doing this on their own? Did they, you know, what was the, what was the reason for getting another partner?
Yeah, it's not relevant. Chris wants to answer it, that's fine, but it's not relevant to site plan.
Any ready answer? Yeah, oh, sure. We've done a number of high-rise projects with Penrose. It's been a very beneficial partnership, work very well together. And why Devco would do it ourselves, we routinely do not do residential projects without a residential partner. Penrose Properties is able to bring financing, equity to a project, plus management. They've owned a number and still own some buildings in New Brunswick, and it's been a good partnership.
Thank you for answering my question. I want to follow up about the funding. I know that there's going to be, the parking authority plans to borrow $23 million to build their portion of the...
For the, for the, what the planning board can answer is, we can't answer these questions. They need sort of private party meetings, and unfortunately, I don't have to answer. I don't think most of the people up here have any decent answers.
Oh, I do believe that parking authority is a public entity and the executive director testified tonight. And so I just want to understand if the parking authority, you know, what their share of the funds are for this project and what the other sources of funding.
Again, Charlie, it's not relevant to site planning. It's an appropriate question to ask the parking authority if the parking authority...
Okay, then I'll just move on to kind of my, my comments on that. I'm concerned about the parking authority borrowing money for this project, especially in light of some of the comments made by Ms. Wingfield about the size of the deck. Do we need a seven-story parking deck? Do we need 344 spaces? It's kind of, kind of a little bizarro considering what we all went through with the mine streak thing and all that, you know? Having some of the same people come here and tell us we need to, to build more parking than is required by the ordinance. That goes against kind of the traditional transit-oriented development model. And not saying it's, it's a, it's a bad plan, I'm just saying I haven't heard exactly why it needs to be. And especially if it's costing taxpayers money and the parking authority already is in debt to the tune of greater than $200 million. This would put them up to around $250. Is this, does, is the parking really need to be such a priority on this project? Again, does it need to be seven stories? Does it need to be 344 spaces? I question that, and that's kind of why I'm asking some of the questions. I'm not trying to be difficult or, or anything. I just want to put this stuff on the record so I can make my points and have you understand where I'm coming from. But I'll move on. I made my point there. The other thing I wanted to know is TD Bank, what's the arrangement with TD Bank? It's a pending arrangement, and they're going to get to be able to provide an ATM in the facility, and they're also going to get parking rights. And I just wanted to know what that, what exactly that means. How many spaces are they going to get? Are they going to be the surface spaces or the deck spaces? And is there also money change in Kansas? Are they buying the land or are they just giving the land in exchange for this parking rights?
I mean, while we're in, we're still in these negotiations, which are, it's kind of final comments. We are replacing parking that's being lost on the surface with a certain number, and I can get to the number, I'm not sure, it's four, five, or six in the garage, which would be used by their employees. And then we're, you know, but the thought is, in particular since TD Bank is open all the time, it seems, that they would have those available for the customers on the ground floor. So...
The surface.
So it's to keep them whole and they are allowing us to build the garage kind of over their parking garage.
And you're going to pay them too or no?
No.
Okay.
Unless you just messed up my negotiation.
I hope not. I hope not. That sounds like a good idea. So hey, I heard apparently Tim Haas and Associates is involved and there's some type of plan for a, I guess, a first in New Brunswick. Futuristic parking deck where you're not going to have a gate, you're not going to have a ticket. Is that, is that the plan?
So first I heard, it sounds interesting.
Yeah, I'd like to hear a little more about that and if the parking authority, what authority the parking's going to have to be able to, you know, make that, make that all work. Facial recognition.
We're going to, we're going to implement pay-by-plate. Basically, if you're familiar with multi-space meters, in some of our lots, we plug in the space number. Move the space number to the license plate. And the, obviously, the residential will also be giving us their license plate. That would be an access card if you will, and then you use LPR. And you'll also be able to re-up, like using Park Mobile, the app. So if you run, you know, run all the time, you'll be able to app all that.
Sounds, sounds very interesting. Is there a way to, if somebody does park there for a couple hours and then doesn't pay and leaves? What's the enforcement mechanism? The parking authority doesn't have the, the, under the law, do they have the ability to send them, send them a summons? Is that, is that how it's going to work?
The enforcement is just like we enforce our lots without...
You'd have to catch it.
Enforcement, yes.
Thank you for that. And I did want to ask if that NEPA detailed study that was referenced, if that's available to the public. That's pretty much my last question.
It's part of a process and application of the federal government. So once the process is finished, yeah, we would release it to the public. And it's still a draft form.
Okay, and any idea of the timeframe?
I would think by August.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for answering my questions. Have a great night.
Hey, you ready to write and state your names by your last name here, please?
Armando Pigman, P-I-G-M-A-N. Sorry? Yes. So I have a question and a comment. The first question is also regarding the parking. I believe that in a town that's supposedly urban, I think there are plenty of parking garages. And at some point, I believe that it actually affects the quality of life when there's literally a parking garage on almost every block in the city. I realize there is a need for parking, but at some point, I feel like we have to call it down for the sake of the building in the city. Now, for the parking study that you guys did earlier, could I ask, what, did you guys follow any particular standards to determine how many parking spaces were needed?
We did a shared parking study.
You gotta bring it up here. We gotta get those on the center, if you can. I'll face it up this way when asking and answering questions.
Within the redevelopment plan, which guides the zoning and the parking requirements in there, there's a shared parking analysis criteria which we utilize. And it's based on the square footage of office, number of residential units, and the anticipated time periods on when those parking stalls are going to be utilized. That's the form that is that we apply.
Are those like, where do those forms come from? Are they in-house?
They were within the redevelopment plan, but it was a kind of a, you know, common, kind of a general standard.
They were in-house, which we put them in the redevelopment.
Is it ITD?
No.
Okay. General comments, I'm not sure there's much you guys can actually do about this. But I feel like a parking garage of this size creates a very large test base on Bayard. It's not the most vibrant place in the world right now, and I'm not sure that this is going to do anything to help that matter. I know there are some businesses on here that could stand to do better. Again, not really, there are some more creative designs we can do to usually high-parking with the unusual shape of your site plan. I realize it's probably a little bit difficult, but are there...
Okay, we actually, we spent quite a bit of time, I say we, I had nothing to do, it's a civil engineer. But the architects spent quite a bit of time, and there was some prime design development, but then we got to try and break up. If I misspeak.
First, two-thirds of the block is storefront because there are dance studios.
Right, okay.
Or lobby, so, you know, we are taking what is now a parking lot. That would be basically two-thirds of the block. And we have the two, current power to pay with the lobby.
Right, so at the ground level, this is what Chris was referring to, the studio space. You're not just going to see an architecture up there. And then as we go up the building, one thing we're looking at... And then as we go up the building, one thing we're looking at with designage relative to the block is some banners, just kind of adding some features so you're not looking at an empty facade.
Okay. I guess I'm still uncomfortable with the, why it feels excessive presence of parking in the city, but if we have to build a parking garage, I think that's a good negotiation.
A lot of discussion.
Thank you. Anyone else? I just wanted to thank everyone for their comments. I thought we had a lot of fairly thoughtful comments tonight and I appreciated hearing and for the first time in my short time here on the board, the desire to have less parking in the city, which I think is a good development. And I think I would encourage anyone who has concerns about these issues to continue to come. The, the best place to do that would actually be when we approve the redevelopment plans. At that point, we talked a lot about what are the standards that are gonna be set for the plan? This project is coming to us already in conformance with that plan. And I think at that time, the city as well as the planning board takes a lot of input from the public to try to get that right. I also think it's, we still have some pros and cons and we're weighing a lot of different factors. And I'm glad to hear that so many people are concerned about creating vibrant city as well as vibrant civic and public space. I could not be more grateful that New Brunswick as the downtown develops and strengthens, we mean to create more robust cultural institutions and new public spaces. So thank you for your comments and giving your...
Charles. Okay. So just to follow up on that, we did the redevelopment planning process. We did put a lot of those kinds of elements in. This is a transit oriented area downtown. We were designated as a transit village. This is where the city in our master plan ended the redevelopment plan and says, density should be developed near the bus lines, near the, the train station, near the job centers. Particularly with, with this project, as Mr. Roach was mentioning, the redevelopment plan requires shared parking so that spaces can be used by multiple users. So you reduce the number of parking spaces that are being developed. There's also a requirement for bike parking with the project. Like we, bike spaces have to be in secure, weather protected areas. So we're doing a lot to try to create uses that are alternatives to, to the cars, putting buildings in areas where they are walkable, where there's near transit, with multiple uses in the building. So we, a lot of the comments here, those are things we really tried to do. Even some of the earlier comments about the wind factors and so forth, those were things that we really went back and forth a lot with in the redevelopment plan process to try to address some of those issues. So we are trying to make it a more, more walkable, more friendly downtown area.
Thank you, Mr. Hapson.
Well, I just wanted to say again, it's not refreshing that people say that they, that they want less, less of the parking garage type facades that are out there. And I think that when I first started on the board, you know, we would stress over the number of parking spaces and it's very costly for developers, it's, it's kind of wasted space to a certain extent. And it's horrifying sometimes to drive to the city and see nothing but, nothing but parking garages as opposed to the less architectural, you know, buildings. I can see that the architect has addressed that on the street level, the, you know, where you, where we are literally walking by. The upper level, they've also done that as well to try to address the fact, kind of mask the fact that it isn't, that it isn't parking garage, it's not as obvious as, as some of the older parking garages we do have in this city. And it's nice to hear the public commentary on the fact that they wanna see this become a more walkable, more, more vibrant area. And you can only do that if you allow pedestrian traffic, if you allow pedestrians to wander about without concern or with minimal concern for traffic. One of the things with the, with the residential high-rise is that it's always going to, the unfortunate thing with New Brunswick is that there's, there's very few ways it's out of town. You know, there are a lot of roads, but they all lead to the same places. And so with, with residential development, we need to bring it downtown and hopefully, as some of the comments were made, we have fewer people that are utilizing cars. But we still have people that are committed to, to their cars and until the city addresses some of the things that we need to do to provide people the amenities downtown that they don't necessarily need a car, we're gonna, we're gonna experience those traffic congestion problems. Because really, there's a 1.18 and then, you know, we live, I live on East and Ave, we're close to East and Ave, you know, on the way out of town. We've seen that traffic get progressively worse as the development has happened. The whole thing is, as they say, it's changing that culture, the automobile culture, transit hubs. Hopefully, we can reduce the, we can reduce that and begin to start reducing that car culture. It's gonna take a long time, but maybe someday we'll get to a point where we can make these developments where we don't even have to worry about dividing a parking garage or parking deck. We're on shore, effectively it'd be a lot easier for our neighbors to, they'd have, they'd have, how to mask a, mask a parking, parking garage. So it conforms with our master plan. We have talked about this several times. Mr. Patterson has made a, an effort to do what he is doing downtown. He's presented his, his, his thoughts and ideas to the board. We have agreed with, with the direction it's going. And I think that this is a great, a great plan with a great partnership between Devco, who's been committed to this city for, well, since J&amp;J decided to commit here as well too, which is, I guess, top supply in city back in the, back in those days. And so I think that, you know, when you have developments committed to the city and they come up with a plan like this or a proposal, I just think it's, it's a good direction that we're heading. In spite of the, perhaps made too much parking. That's all I have to say.
Chairman, if there's a motion in favor of the project, we suggest attaching following conditions. So it applies to the terms of the DNR engineering report dated April 10th, 2017. Such as all necessary easements and or plus access agreements for view and approval upon the board returning and city engineer prior filing the same. Paying the site performance bond, the amount to be reviewed approved by the city engineer. Such as on-site inspection, escrow, deposit, or engineering inspection fees, amount to be calculated for simple total 16.4160. Paying the wall order and sewer connection fees for simple total 1504 and 1308. The chance of road, the permit by city if required. Applies to the terms of the DNR consulting group report dated April 5th, 2017. Paying redeveloper fee available to the city of New Brunswick. May the monetary contribution to the city's tree preservation trust fund amount to be determined by total 8.48. Planning review, escrow funders will anticipate most approval renewed. Paying any other fees to the city of New Brunswick related to development or use of this project. Paying all outstanding taxes and water and sewer fees. Middlesex County Pointing Board approval waiver saying DNR canal commission approval of waiver. Field soil concentration, District approval of waiver. Submit of a, submit of an approval or waiver of any other agency or jurisdiction. Final of a subdivision, of course, of the map filing act, final of lock consolidation fee. Submit engineering site plans comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering memos or plan amendments offered at the hearing. Submit architectural plans comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering memos or plan amendments at the hearing. And it was a special condition that WB 6B length trucks should make all deliveries after normal business hours and thus not include the, the regular downtown traffic. All utilities on our site proved to maintain by the outpouring of sold expense. All on-site utilities, we construct the underground, all temporary purchase in public right of way should require city council approval. All construction stations will be done on-site unless the approach and allow, or the same into the public right of way is approved by city council. Streets will get clean of sediment and debris. The outpouring shall cause the streets to be clean. If directed, reduce the level of their public orders. Traffic pass should be installed by construction exits, replacement of damaged streets, current sidewalk. As per the direction of the city engineer, for the installation of, of bicycle parking facilities and installation of weather protected bicycle parking facilities. Mr. Chairman, I would also ask the board consider time 30 minutes enforcement. Public parking, and by parking, probably the time 30 minutes. And the parking authority enter into...
You have parking enforcement rates in your debt, correct?
Correct, yeah.
So I, I don't know if we need that, Aaron.
We have local ordinance, probably.
Well, this is gonna be a parking, parking authority debt. They have authority to, the ticket is included in their debt. Don't think we need that.
Motion to approve.
Pierre Jeko?
Yes.
Steve Lujon?
Yes.
Larry Barber?
Yes.
Priscilla Toh?
Yes.
John Fertilino?
Yes.
Andrew Castner?
Yes.
Stan Loewith?
Yes.
David Sanger?
Yes.
Jeff Trump?
Yes.
Thank you very much.